Regular meeting number one will now come to order. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.[18.23][18.23](Music)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Let us pray. God and Father of us all, the members of Columbus City Council come together here in the first meeting of the new year to conduct the business of our city and to welcome a new member of Columbus City Council. A new year brings new possibilities, and the members of our council are eager and willing to embrace them. At the same time, Lord, we're conscious of the sufferings of people caught in the chaos of terrorism, our brothers and sisters in France, and others who are victims of this unique form of hatred and destruction. May your loving grace change the hearts of those who perpetuate these sins against humanity, and by your wisdom, grace, and love help all of us to reverence the gift of human life, your most precious gift to us. May we become ministers of tolerance, acceptance, love, and peace. We also remember today, Lord, our Buckeyes in this coming championship game. We pray for the health and safety of the members of both teams, as well as all of those traveling to and from this game tonight. We pray, Lord, that the better team will win tonight, and we all know which one that is. Amen.[188.12][188.12](Laughter)
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The first item of business for council this evening is the appointment of a new member of Columbus City Council to fill the vacated seat of Councilmember Herschel F. Craig. I would ask the city clerk to read the resignation letter from former member Councilmember Craig into the record.
Dated December 15, 2014, Dear President Ginther, serving on Columbus City Council has been one of the greatest honors of my life. The opportunity that I've had to serve the residents of our city has been an extraordinary privilege. On January 1, 2015, I will begin the next chapter of my career in public service as state representative from the 26th district. Therefore, I am officially resigning from Columbus City Council effective Wednesday, December 31, 2014, at 11:59 PM. It has been an honor to serve with you and with the members of Columbus City Council. I look forward to working with you in my new capacity as a member of the Ohio General Assembly. I wish you and the members of council the best, and I look forward to our continued partnership. Sincerely, Herschel F. Craig, Member of Columbus City Council.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. I just wanted to go on the record before we discuss and act on filling this vacancy tonight on the outstanding pool of candidates that we had, the great fortune as council members and as a collective city to be able to consider leading our great city council. I appreciate the folks that applied, that went through the process, but also their families, because this is a family commitment. This is not just an individual acting on his or her own entering this process and a very public side of life to serve in this community. So, to all those that applied, that went through the process, that shared their vision, their values, and their priorities with this caucus, I wanted to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for giving us so many great options and alternatives to choose from, a very talented group of people. Any comments from council members? Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. I'd also echoing your comments, it's joyful to serve on the Columbus City Council and do the work of serving the city of Columbus, but when it comes to filling the vacancies, it also can be a frustrating time, because you know that there are so many wonderful applicants, but there's only one seat. And I'd also like to thank those that put themselves out, that stepped out of their comfort zone and wanted to serve the city that we all love. We love it tremendously and want to serve it in different capacities. So, thank you to them and their families for putting your neck on the line to want to serve the city in an elected capacity, because it's a tough job. It's a tough job, but it's a rewarding one. So, thank you, Council President.
Any other comments regarding the process? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther. I too would just like to say thank you to all the individuals that applied for this seat. I had the opportunity to interview each and every one of those individuals that applied, and just appreciate that they love the city so much and want to participate in leading the city as we continue to move forward. So, again, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. For those of you who may not be selected this time, I would just say, don't give up. Continue to serve the city in the different capacities that you're already serving, and look for other opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember Mills?
And I believe my colleagues have expressed thank you, and I too am grateful for the folks who put themselves forward. I know from experience that it's not that easy, but I want to say thank you for the work that you've done before this day and the day before you put your name in the hat for a seat with this body. The work before that gave you the passion that continues to drive you each and every day should continue, and I hope that it does, because we rely heavily on those who are working in our communities and being in the spaces and the places when we cannot be, and those who continue to inform us on the important things that are happening in the community, to continue to do that and continue to do the hard work. And thank you again for putting yourselves forward, and to all the community for their engagement in this process. I think engagement from the community is to be rewarded, and it's necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Paley?
I think that most of the people in this room have heard me say this before, but what makes the city of Columbus what it is is not, obviously, the mountains or the beach, but the people that are in it. And this process certainly showed us why Columbus is the best city in the country. All of the people that screened did a wonderful job and are what makes Columbus us. So, keep being part of us. We encourage all of you to be a part of city council and a part of the city, and we hope to see you all in the community. Thank you.
There aren't any other comments regarding the process? I would ask for a nomination from my colleagues to fill the vacancy as member of Columbus City Council.
Council President, I nominate Jaisa Page to fill the vacant seat left by Councilmember Herschel Craig.
Second. There any other nominations from members of council? It's been moved and seconded. If there aren't any other nominations or discussion, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Harden?
By voice.
Harden?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther?
Yes. Please, join me in congratulating our newest Columbus City Council member, Jaisa Page.[578.66][578.66](Applause) Councilmember Page will have a public swearing-in ceremony, which we will announce separately at a later date. This time, I'd entertain a motion to recess regular meeting number one for 10 minutes. Second, clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We will reconvene in 10 minutes. May I have a motion to reconvene, regular meeting number one? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. There any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
There any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, President Ginther. My only announcement is I want to welcome another member of my team. Edward Johnson has joined the team. This is his first council meeting. I told him that I was going to introduce him, and he said he would try his best to blush, so I'm trying my hardest to get him there. Thank you.[675.56][675.56](Applause) And other than that, just go Bucks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Klein? Councilmember Mills? Councilmember Paley?
Yes, I just have one announcement. Next Monday is Martin Luther King Day in Columbus, and not only do we have the largest Martin Luther King Day breakfast, but we have other exciting plans put on by the Community Relations Commission of the city of Columbus. And one of them, obviously, is that we're changing the route of the march, as well as the location after the march. Director Bell, can you give our listening public some more information about Columbus and Martin Luther King Day?
Thank you so much, President Ginther, Councilmember Paley. Yes, we are changing the march from where we begin and end at. This year, we're going to be starting from the King Arts Complex, beginning there. We'll be gathering again at 4 o'clock there and stepping off at 4:45, led by Mayor Michael Coleman and all of the council members here and other dignitaries, along with so many from the community and Ohio State and so many other places, but we hope to have a bunch of people there. Leading from there, going over the cultural wall, to landing up at the Lincoln Theater, where we're going to have a great program there with our keynote speaker will be Julian Bond, so we hopeful that everyone can come to that and hear a great speaker, along with some additional entertainment there. And we will be over by about 7 o'clock, so the program there starts at 6 and be over about 7:05 at the Lincoln Theater.
I believe if you want to do the march, you need to be at the King Arts Complex at 4:30. We have asked some of the diverse choirs in town to join us, so we should have some great singers. Me and Director Bell and I were disappointed last year in our inability to sing, so we've now recruited singers to come sing with us, so it's open to the entire public. So, come down and march and sing with us and have a good time. And it's a historic day for the city of Columbus, for us to have such a distinguished gentleman as Julian Bond as our keynote speaker, and once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so please join us for him at the Lincoln Theater on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. Yes, I have two announcements, and the first is really an update on the homeless crisis response system. Community Shelter Board is using all of its resources to make sure that no one has to sleep on the streets. A year ago, the homeless system had 417 beds for men and 101 beds for women. This was referring to 1915. The homeless system sheltered 647 men and 327 women. A significant number of beds have been added to brace for our winter season. When dipping temperatures reach dangerous levels, which are 25 degrees or below, extra beds are secured at motels. This severe weather trigger has been in place for the last 15 years to make sure that no one is turned away from the shelter on dangerously cold nights. I also want to thank a number of the nonprofit agencies that have been working with the Community Shelter Board. For the men, the Faith Mission added 70 beds, and the YMCA coordinates additional emergency beds for men at hotels also. For the women, we've been using our new site on the Van Buren as a flexible overflow site. And for families who cannot be accommodated by the YMCA Family Center, they will spend the night at our Van Buren building. If you know of anyone that is in need of shelter, for single men and women, please dial 1-888-474-3587, and for families, 614-253-7970. And my last announcement is I want to urge everyone who has not received a flu shot to do so. The influenza-like illnesses are growing and widespread in this area, causing increased hospitalizations. In the week ending December 20 alone, there were 91 hospitalizations, or nearly one-third of the total number of hospitalizations of the flu since August 25. Additionally, the number of hospitalizations is already five times the number for this time last year. So, please contact your healthcare provider, the local health department, or even the corner pharmacy, so you can give you a quick and easy protection against the flu this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 78-2015. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance 26-2015.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Finance Committee, ordinance 47-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 2937-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 213X-2014, 214X, 248X-2014. Ordinances 2942-2014, 3020-2014, 3072-2014. Resolution 1X-2015, 2X-2015. Ordinances 10-2015, 13, and 83-2015. Development Committee, ordinances 1, 2, 4, 5, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 25, 29, and 30-2015. Environment Committee, ordinance 56-2015. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0214, 216, 235, 278-2014, and numbers 1, 2, 3, and 4-2015.
Thank you. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you would make your way to the podium. You've signed up to speak in support of 0019-2015 and the Development Committee on the consent agenda. You chair your name, address, any organizations you represent. Sir, you have three minutes.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of Minnesota Vacant and Amendment Property in North London there. I just wanted to know what's going to be done with 1418 East of Cordell Avenue, and what this will be used for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins before he takes his seat? Director Shoney, any additional information you can offer to us tonight on this piece of legislation?
President Ginther, members of council, I don't have any additional information tonight, but my staff will follow up with Mr. Wilkins to get him the additional details.
Great, and if you would just copy council members on the response and follow-up, we'd appreciate it.
Certainly.
Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda this evening? I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Development Committee. President Pro Tem Mills chairs the committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in development, we have the following ordinance, 2981, to adopt the Community Development Block Grant Development Service Area Designation through 2024 until 2020 census data are made available to replace outdated 2010 census data on which it is based and to declare an emergency. The CDBG grant-funded activities are designed to improve blighted deteriorated or deteriorating conditions, and it represents identifiable residential community and its associated commercial areas. The Community Development Service Area incorporates the planning and application aspects of the CDBG program and represents a continued commitment to providing decent housing and suitable living environments and expanding economic opportunities. Historically, a census-based study and analysis of city has been completed every 10 years to determine those blighted areas, and the Community Development Service Area map is attached for those who have additional questions, and the ordinance is submitted as emergency to ensure the timely submission to HUD. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I want to announce, as the education chair, I wanted to announce that Columbus City Schools' Superintendent Good will be delivering the State of the District on Tuesday evening, tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock PM at COSI, and would appreciate attendance by all those who are listening and viewing tonight to hear the State of the District from Superintendent Good. That's all I have this evening.
There's nothing else to come before council in our regular business this evening. I do know we have some non-agenda speakers that we will take after we adjourn the regular business meeting. If there is anything else to come before council, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We will reconvene for zoning at 6:30 and take non-agenda speakers momentarily. Regular meeting number two will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
There any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. I chair the committee. All members serve on the committee. First in zoning this evening, we have 0036-2015 to rezone 1015 Dennison Avenue, 43201, being 1.14 plus or minus acres located at the southwest corner of Dennison and Starr Avenues from P2, Public Parking District, to ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant is Connie J. Kleema, 145 East Rich Street, second floor, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Victorian Village Commission recommended approval. The Development Commission recommended approval on December 11, 2014. If there aren't any questions or comments regarding this legislation from council members, first I move to waive second reading. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Second reading waived. Now I move for passage. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 0037-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.04, ARO Apartment Office District, 3312.13B driveway, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3321.05B2 vision clearance, 3333.15 basis of computing area, 3333.16 fronting, 3333.18 building lines, 3333.24 rear yard, 3333.255 perimeter yard, and 3333.26A height district of the Columbus City codes for the property located at 1015 Dennison Avenue, 43201, to permit reduced development standards in the ARO Apartment Office District for a 16-unit apartment and office building. The applicant is Connie J. Kleema, 145 East Rich Street, second floor, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Victorian Village Commission recommended approval. If there are no questions or comments regarding this legislation, first I'd move to waive second reading. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Second reading waived. Next, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 0041-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.03.039, R4 Residential District, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.29 parking space, 3312.49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3332.05 area district lot width requirements, 3332.15 R4 area district requirements, 3332.19 fronting on a public street, 3332.21D building lines, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City codes for the property located at 150 Detroit Avenue, 43201, to permit a three-unit dwelling and a single-unit dwelling above a detached garage, a carriage house, on one lot with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District, council variance CV14-059. The applicant is Connie J. Kleema, 145 East Rich Street, second floor, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed unit is a three-unit dwelling and single-unit dwelling, carriage house on one lot. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Italian Village Commission recommended approval. We do have a speaker slip on this legislation. If our speakers are present, if you would please stand. On the advice of city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand. Raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. Our first step through this process will be asking staff for a presentation.
Good evening. The undeveloped site is owned R4 Residential District. The requested council variance will allow the construction of a three-unit dwelling and a rear single-unit carriage house on one lot. Other variances are included for maneuvering, stacked parking, and fronting on a public street with reductions to lot width, lot area, building line, minimum side yard, rear yard, and required parking for one space. A council variance is necessary because the R4 Residential District permits a maximum of four dwelling units in one building, but does not permit two separate residential buildings on one lot. Staff finds that the proposal will not add incompatible uses to the area, as there are other carriage houses within this community. The request is consistent with the recent development patterns and historic urban neighborhoods, and building design will conform to the Italian Village Commission requirements. Therefore, our recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Any questions for staff at this point? If not, next I'd ask for either a presentation or statement from the applicant or representative. Ms. Kleema, anything you'd like to share with us before we hear the speaker?
Thank you, President Ginther. Yes, I'm Connie Kleema, and I recommend...
Thank you, President Ginther. Yes, I'm Connie Kleema, and I represent the property owner. This particular site is almost a triangular-type shape, which is why some of the area variances are required. And as Shannon just explained, in an R4 District, while four units are permitted, which is all that we're proposing on this site, they're only permitted if they're in a single-unit building. And we are presenting for you a three-unit building at the front of the site and a one unit at the rear of the site, which will be over the parking areas, which is a carriage house, which is very typical in this particular area. And parking, we have seven onsite parking spaces. So the Italian Village Commission, after a lot of working with neighbors and also with the commission, has recommended approval, as has staff, and I will obviously like to respond if needed after the speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kleema. Our speaker, we generally take three speakers in support and three against. We just have one speaker who has signed up against this legislation this evening, Mr. Andrew Klein. Ms. Klein, if you'd share name, address, and any organizations you represent. Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. I appreciate this opportunity to speak in opposition to this request to permit a three-unit dwelling and a single-unit dwelling at 150 Detroit Avenue. I live at 190 Say Avenue, which is a block west of the property. I also own the building and operate an office at 162 Detroit, which is on the same block west, the same block just west of this property, excuse me, just east of this property. So I've lived in the neighborhood since 1987. I've owned my building on the same block since 19, since, excuse me, 2003. It was referred to by staff as an undeveloped site. In fact, the site in question was one of four lots which were platted in the 1880s and built with identical single-family homes. Three of the four homes still exist. My building occupies the eastern side of the site, and this building, the site formerly had a single-family home, and they're now proposing to put four units there. The other two units in the middle are still single-family homes. My building, over time, morphed into a single-family home with a neighborhood grocery store attached to the front. In time, it was developed into a three-unit building. My office now occupies the first floor and shares the first floor with one bedroom, and there's a two-bedroom apartment above. So I have three units on my property with garage in back. There's two single-family homes next to it, and this vacant lot, they say it's undeveloped, but in fact, it's been used as a parking site for the houses across the street. There's eight units directly across the street which have no off-street parking, and this site has been used as an informal parking lot. So I believe that four units is going to have an adverse effect, that it's not a compatible use with our neighborhood. In terms of the commission approval, I understand the vote was three to two. I would appreciate the council members considering the fact that this is not typical for this block, and I would request that you ask the applicant to reduce the number of units to three. I believe the concern about having a carriage house and a space above the carriage house is a valid one, and I really don't have an objection to having a carriage house at the back of the property. As she described, the property is wider at the back than it is at the front, so it makes sense to intensively develop that. But I believe that having three units into the smaller end at the southern end of this parcel is one unit too many, and I would request that council not approve this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any follow-up questions for Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein, if you could just hold tight for just a second. I'm not sure. Councilmember Rose, you have a question for Mr. Klein or for staff? Okay.
Mr. Klein, I just wanted to make sure that I understood. You talked about two properties that were yours, one that's a block away and one that's somewhat next door. I was a little...
I own a house since 1987 at 1090 Say Avenue, which is immediately west, a block west of the proposed subject. So I walk every day from my house to my office, and I pass by this lot every day. It's midway between my home and my office. My office is in the three-unit building at 162 Detroit. There's a residence at 1083, a one-bedroom in the same building, and at 160 Detroit, there's a two-bedroom upstairs. So my building, which was originally a single-family, like the other three buildings on this block, is now a three-unit building. If that's helpful.
Okay, and you're asking consideration for the, for a total of three as opposed to the four?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood, and then I had a question for staff.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein, so we can let him take a seat? Can you hold off for just a second for your question for staff? Councilmember Klein, your question for Mr. Klein.
Could you just maybe, and I apologize if I missed it, what exactly is your objection? Like, why are you objecting to this?
I'm objecting that this is going to have, this is going to add an incompatible use to our neighborhood in the sense that it's going to create four units where one had traditionally, it's going to alter the nature of this block from occupying essentially single-family homes to now having multiple family, four units where one unit had formerly existed. There is a precedence for building single-family homes in this neighborhood. There's a new build directly across the street, which was built as a single-family home and is occupied as a single-family home, and I believe it's going to change the nature of this block.
So currently, it's a single-family home?
Currently, it's a vacant lot.
Okay.
But when it was originally developed, it was developed as a single-family home, and the other houses on the lot were developed as a single-family home, and two out of those three are still occupied as single-family homes. The building I own is now a three-unit building, because over time, it grew and was expanded beyond its original footprint.
Okay, so it's vacant. They want to put a four-unit with a carriage house in the back?
Three units in front, which is the narrowest end of the lot.
Okay.
And at the back end, a carriage house with one unit above.
And you think it should only be two?
I believe, I have no objection to the carriage house in the back, especially given the unusual shape of the lot, but I believe with the unusual shape of the lot, putting three units in the front is an incompatible use with the rest of the block.
Okay, I now understand, and I also have a question for staff, council president, when that's appropriate. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein?
I'm fine now. I'm confused. In your property, are the three units on the front?
Yes. My, the way this, the way this block was platted, as you know, High Street doesn't go north-south, and the lot was platted so it is parallel to High Street, but the other streets form, it's a parallelogram. So whereas the property in question has a narrower end in the front and a wider end at the back, my property has the wider end in the front and the narrower end in the back. So on my property, I have wider by probably 10 or 12 feet than the back end, and it can accommodate a two-bedroom apartment upstairs, my office, and a one-bedroom on the first floor. This property has the narrower end, where they're proposing to put three units, and at the back of the property, where the alley is, it's a wider footprint, and they're going to have a carriage house, which I don't object to.
So I'm not, I'm still not understanding what you're objecting to. Are you objecting to the appearance, or are you objecting to the amount of people or the use, or what are you objecting to?
Objecting to the precedence of losing the single-family residence standard that we have for this block. When this block was developed, it was developed for single-family, and I understand that, you know, a typical family today is a smaller family, but I believe having three units in that front is too many, given the history of the block and the intensity of the use, and the fact that they're going to be displacing a large number of automobiles that are going to end up parking on the street and causing congestion in the street. So yes, it's a combination of the density of use and the precedence for having single-family homes in this block.
So are you asking the property owner to allow people to keep parking on their property even if they have three units?
If three units were developed, that's going to allow a little more than one car per unit, which I think will at least not exacerbate the problem that's going to be caused when the cars that are parking illegally are moved onto the street. This is a very, this is an unusual situation, that we had single-family homes on one side of the street, eight units with no off-street parking directly across the street, which are using this vacant lot as their overflow parking, and it's going to create, I believe, an incompatible use in our neighborhood as a result.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein before we go to staff? Thank you, Mr. Klein, for coming and sharing your thoughts. Any questions for staff before we have the applicant respond or offer a rebuttal? Questions for staff? Councilmember Klein.
Excuse me. It's R4, so you can have four consecutive units?
Yes.
And so the, what's the variance here, that it's going to be three with the carriage house?
Two separate dwelling units on one lot.
So without the variance, he could, the applicant could still do four units?
That is correct. They would probably still need some of the variances to the R4 standards, but it would have gone to the Board of Zoning Adjustment instead of here at council tonight.
But going R4 wouldn't necessarily, which is the applicant is entitled to do, utilizing the R4, the maximum use of an R4 zoning, would be, still be detrimental to Mr. Klein, because he believes that it should be two. So really, in a lot of ways, this is, this could be construed, although Mr. Klein may not agree with it, it could be construed as a downzoning because of the breaking up into two different units.
Correct.
Am I on the right path, Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mills.
I might be slightly off-base with this being a staff question as opposed to applicant question in terms of the parking, because the applicant mentioned seven onsite spaces, but those won't exist if I understand the person, Mr. Klein, in correctly about how that parking will work. So again, it may not be your question, it may be the question for the applicant, but I'm trying to understand the parking, that challenge that will be created or, and/or exists now.
The seven parking spaces will be for the new users. Technically, two separate dwelling units would require eight parking spaces. They're providing seven. However, if a four-unit dwelling was constructed on the site, code would only require six parking spaces. So there was no parking issue perceived from staff. As far as this lot being used for parking, we conduct field, field site visits, and there were no cars parked on this lot when I took pictures of the site back in November.
Good. I'd like to invite the applicant to offer a rebuttal. Ms. Kleema?
Thank you. And in regard to the parking spaces, empty lots in the village areas sometimes become parking lots that are not supposed to be parking lots because there's space to park. So if this has been used by the multifamily across the street, which I have to mention, is there's a four-unit directly across the street and another four-unit right next to it, it was done because the lot was vacant. This property will provide sufficient parking for the units that are being proposed, and as Mr. Klein stated, with his, he has three units in the front, now his office and his apartments. The commission had requested that the three units be in the front of the property to keep that type of appearance, so the three units are not in the back, and the single unit in the back is above the parking, as I said before, which makes it look similar to other carriage houses in the area. So the commission was supportive of this, and as the staff has been. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any other discussion before we proceed? If not, I'd make a motion to waive second reading of this legislation. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Second reading waived. Next, a move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Legislation passes. Next is 0042-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District, 3312.13 driveway, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.29 parking space, 3312.49 minimum number of parking spaces required, 3321.05 vision clearance, 3332.05 area district lot width requirements, 3332.15 area district requirements, 3332.18D basis of computing area, 3332.19 fronting, 3332.25 maximum side yards required, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard. The Columbus City codes for the property locate 607 Dennison Avenue, 43215, to permit a four-unit dwelling and a two-unit dwelling above a detached garage, carriage house on one lot with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is Benji Lewis, Care of Jackson Reynolds, Attorney, 37 West Broad Street, Suites 460, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. The proposed use is to conform an existing four-unit dwelling and to construct a two-unit dwelling on the same lot. City department's recommendation is approval. Victorian Village Commission recommended approval. There aren't any questions or comments regarding this legislation. I'd move to waive second reading. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Waive second reading, and now I'd move to table to January 26, 2015. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
It is tabled to January 26, 2015. Finally, I'm sorry, we've got a couple more. 0071-2015 to amend ordinance number 2420-2014, passed November 3, 2014, Z14-039 for property located at 880 Green Lawn Avenue, 43223, by amending Sections 1 to 3 in order to correct the legal description of the 9.89 plus or minus acre tract. City department's recommendation is approval. If there are any questions or comments, first of all, I'd move to waive second reading. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Second reading waived, and next, a move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Next, we have 0079-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District, use 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.29 parking space, 3332.15 R4 area district requirements, 3332.18D basis of computing area, 3332.19 fronting on a public street, 3332.25 maximum side yards required, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, 3332.27 rear yard. The Columbus City codes for the property located at 60 East Hubbard Avenue, 43215, to conform an existing single-unit dwelling and permit a three-unit dwelling on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is Connie J. Kleema, 145 East Rich Street, second floor, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Proposed use is a single-unit dwelling and a three-unit dwelling on one lot. City department's recommendation is approval. The Italian Village Commission recommended approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation? If not, first I'd move to waive second reading. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Second reading waived, and finally, move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. That's all we have for the zoning agenda this evening. Anything else to come before zoning? Second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther. Harden Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Stand adjourned. Go Bucks.